Welcome to the, what is today's date?
Twenty.
Twenty-fourth, October 24th. Planning board meeting, this meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. There may also be people who come in via Zoom. And that's enough to start with. Okay. Planner's report?
Catherine is online, so I'm not sure if she would like to share something.
Okay. Maybe not.
All right, so I will read it. The, for departmental business, the conservation agent position remains open. I believe that there are two candidates that will be meeting with the commission on Monday. And we'll see where it goes from there. The other item was permiedize. We're still working on the implementation. We received our first application today as a test application, and it came through fine, so it seems to be working good. MBTA communities, we will discuss tonight. The master plan, Weston and Sampson has been selected as our consultant for the master plan. We are doing a kickoff meeting next week, and we are looking for volunteers for steering committee for the master plan. So, just thinking hats on and see if you'd like to participate. For economic development, the Economic Development Committee continues its update of the EDC resource binders. And she, Catherine, is continuing to update the choosefoxborough.com website, has a lot of information there. And there is a business development guide that needs to be updated, so that's something that is expected to be done early in next year. The, for opportunities, 131 Moore Street, developer is interested in locating a biomass production facility at the site. The staff met with federal and state agencies to discuss the two pathways to take with this site. And we'll need to wait for the results of the Phase One study, so that developers can know an estimated cost of remediation. For the Schneider Electric, they're continuing the demolition, and there's still no updates on the potential use of the site. And for the State Hospital Auditorium, we're waiting legislative action to release the building to the town, so that we can offer it on, for bids.
Can you hear me now? I apologize.
Yes.
Yes, we can. Excellent. So, do we, are we expecting that sometime this session, that hopefully we'll get that approval?
The auditorium building?
I was asking if you thought that, if anyone knows if we think that it'll be taken care of this session.
I believe that it's supposed to be done out of session, so I would hope for a response that's sooner, but probably it's more realistic that it'll happen in the next session.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, Gabby did a great job, thanks.
So, anything else on active subdivisions or anything like that?
No, the construction continues to happen on Lawson Farm and Eisenhower Lane. We are setting up a meeting next week to kick off the construction for Pine Estates, the 204E Street subdivision. I believe that the developers who will be building it are closing on the property tomorrow. So, we want to, you know, get that going as soon as possible. They would like to get that going as soon as possible.
Sure.
And we've received a request to, for a reduction of the performance guarantee for Lawson Farm, and we'll be considering that at the next, at our next meeting.
Okay, and we have some minutes from October 10th. On the discussion for Chestnut Street, I would like to just insert a sentence at some point in there that the developer stated that he intended to market those units at $800,000.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve those minutes for October 10th, as amended. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now we have an action item for 129 Washington Street for an informal discussion. Good evening, how are you Frank?
Good evening. Attorney Frank Spahn here, representing the owners of 129, 127 Washington Street. I'd like to file an application to do a review of appeals, so that we can split the lot of the 129, 127 Washington Street into two lots. And we can move the things right there and the property to the path. But we can see we can also, the back row is now William Buckley, Big Collin Group, if there's any question about the three sets plans. As well as Amanda Chase, who runs CrossFit Tork, and Rich Chase, who runs Chase Lumber. What we're proposing in front of the, in front of those appeals, is to split the lot into two lots. One which will contain the CrossFit Tork building, which was approved back in 2013.
Can we pause for a minute? Your microphone is not on.
He's just going to go to the podium.
Attorney Frank Spahn here, representing the owners of 129, 127 Washington Street. With me this evening is civil engineer William Buckley, as well as Amanda Chase, who runs CrossFit Tork on the property, and Rich Chase, who runs Chase Lumber. We hope to be filing an application with the Board of Appeals to subdivide that lot into two lots, two conforming lots. One would contain the CrossFit building, which was permitted back in 2013, I believe, and an application to put an addition on was also approved a couple of years ago. So, what we're attempting to do is to get permission from the Board of Appeals to subdivide it into two conforming lots. I met with the Building Commissioner to go over all the requirements, and this is similar to what occurred, I think about five, six years ago with Panis Road, when we subdivided a lot there with two different warehouses. Each of the lots require different variances. All of the variances have to do really with the side yard, because within side yards, you're not supposed to be having parking and access, and also you're supposed to have landscaping. So, all the variances we're requiring really has to do with the side yard, that lot two on the proposal abuts lot one. Because you have an access way there, that's going to require variances on both lots. You have parking up to the side yard, and that's going to require variances, as well as access, because they're going to be able to access each other's lots from each of their frontages, and you're supposed to only access your lot from your frontage. That'll also require variance, even though they can access their lot from their own frontage, there's another access from another frontage. That's going to be requiring a variance. So, all the variances really have to do with is the access in that side lot. In this case, though, we're going to have to require a finding also. Unlike Panis Road, which were a new building that was already constructed, and a new building that was going to be constructed. Chase Lumber is an old building that's been there since at least the 60s, and they have structures which they use for storage that's too close to the front yard, because again, this lot has two front yards, and therefore all the other ones are side yards. So, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot because of those structures. Because of that, we also need a finding. We did need a finding back in Panis Road, because all the structures met all the setback requirements. And because these structures do not, we also require a finding. And I worked through all those things with the Building Commissioner, and I believe you guys have a copy of the letter that he returned to me saying he agreed with all my findings. But even I said, before I sent him the letter, I sat down with him and went through it all, because it can be a little confusing, because of the difference with the pre-existing non-conforming structures. But again, we're in front of you tonight, as we did with Panis Road before we went for the Board of Appeals, to see if this board had any real issues with what we're proposing. Hopefully, you don't have any issues with that. You can send the Board of Appeals just a notice saying you've looked at it, and you don't have an issue with this concept, and then the Board of Appeals can look at it, you know, for the requirements we need to prove with them in order to get the variances in the finding. But we want to make sure you're comfortable with it. Now, the expansion that was approved a couple of years ago would be required to be modified, and that's in my letter, as well as the Building Commissioner's letter, because you gave a waiver to the parking requirements.
I did.
And the expand, and the parking would be on the Chase property, Chase Lumber property.
Yeah.
So, there was a, the opinion of the Building Commissioner, and I agreed with them, that they'd, they'd have to come in here to modify that. At that point, you can also modify and look at the parking on the Chase Lumber property to see if any changes need to be done there also.
Is there still an expectation that that will move forward at one point?
The hope there is yes. The real, there are a number of reasons why they're doing this. One is, as with Panis Road, estate planning purposes. You know, they want to carve off the piece for CrossFit, which Amanda is running, and a piece for Chase Lumber, which Rick is running. Also, for the financing, for the addition of that, they want to limit it to that property and not the whole property overall. So, those are the main, main things that they're looking at. But again, if they got all the approvals on that, they couldn't go to the Building Commissioner tomorrow and get a building permit for that. He'd say, no, you have to go back, get that modified, and have the parking for your property, as well as Chase looked at. And also, they'd have to prove that they have a right to build that parking, if it's required down the road.
So, a couple of other quick questions for you Frank. So, with the, you talked about the access through either party.
I'm sorry?
You talked about access from either party.
Yeah.
So, they could cross over and get whatever they needed. But there's, well, I noticed here that on this, on this plane, you're still showing that from the CrossFit side, there's still a septic that crosses over to the, to lot one side there.
Right.
So, is that going to, how does that get handled? Or is it just an agreement between the two parties, or?
Yes.
Okay.
There'll have to be easements?
Yeah.
So, when I met with them early on, and I got Mr. Buckley involved, I said, you know, can we, you know, cut off that access, so you each only have your own access? And of course, the answer is yes, and as Bill likes to say, we can do anything if we have enough money. But their issue really is safety. A lot of the people that go to CrossFit come up off of Main Street and go in that way, so they don't have to turn into their, coming off of Route One, if they're going northbound.
Right.
Southbound is not a problem, but northbound, they don't. So, they really didn't want to do that. The main, main reason was safety. You know, people don't want to take that, that left.
So, and would those easements be in perpetuity? In other words, you know, let's say either party at some point in the future.
Sold.
When it was when, sold, would they, would the new owner, you know, have to honor those easements for whatever those items are?
Yep, and there were other easements with, and Bill's mentioned to me, with regard to drainage and other things, that would have to be ironed out. But this is kind of a one-step process. If you guys told me tonight, no way, we wouldn't be filing. If the ZBA says, you know, no, we don't meet the requirements, then we wouldn't go into it. If we got all the approvals, that would then be the next step to go through.
I just want to make sure that, you know, that everything's sort of tight, you know, for the future.
Same thing on.
For either side, for either party.
Same thing on Panis Road. They have a lot of easements going back and forth there, and both of those buildings were sold.
Right.
I think they were sold to different people. So, there were a lot of, you know, access easements. I don't think they had needed parking easements there, though. But there were, you know, also, you know, snow removal and things like that. You know, you have to think those things out.
Right, sure. Okay. Any questions from anybody else, or comments?
So, we're just looking for if the board has any issues with the concept of subdividing it. And if you don't, if you could just let the Board of Appeals know that, that we're in front of you, you don't have a problem with the concept, and let the Board of Appeals then, you know, take the application on from there.
Do you want to take a vote on this, or anything?
No, it's an informal.
It's an informal, so, yeah.
Well, from what I said, I don't have any problems. There's going to be some stuff, as Frank pointed out, we're going to need to iron out moving forward, but the concept is solid.
Yeah, I don't have any issues either.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. You're welcome. Okay, being sometime past 7:10 PM, we have a public hearing for Warren article, Foxborough zoning bylaw to amend Section 9.0 by inserting a new Section 9.8 establishing the Foxborough multifamily overlay district, sub-district version, and amend various sections to conform with the new Section 9.8.
Can we also open?
Yeah.
The next one as well?
Oh, okay, and also a public hearing for Warren article, Foxborough zoning bylaw, amend Section 9.0 by inserting a new Section 9.8 establishing the Foxborough multifamily overlay district, Patriot Place version, and amend various sections to conform with new Section 9.8. That it?
Yes.
Well.
Can we get the PowerPoint?
Mr. Oprah. I don't think he's presenting. Is he, this morning going to present?
Catherine.
Catherine's going to present. Is that right, Catherine's going to present?
Yeah, I think, yeah, Catherine.
Can you hear me?
A little bit.
A little bit, okay.
That's better.
All right, I'll keep my fingers where they are then. I am going to keep the camera off, just because I, in order to cough the least, I have to be on a specific side, so bear with me as I get through these presentations. But I have a slide set up. I will need help getting them shuffled through. I tried to get my laptop set off in advance this evening, but unfortunately, I could not, because it isn't yet registered to me. So, for now, if someone can help me to get through the presentation.
Yeah, I got the remote to change those slides.
Excellent, thank you. So, can you go down to the what is MBTA community slide? And this is going to be background for the planning board, but just as a helpful reminder for folks who might be tuning in. This is a law that was adopted in 2021, codified into Section 3A of Chapter 40A, and it establishes a requirement for 177 Massachusetts communities to create a multifamily zoning district by right near MBTA communities, MBTA stations of various types. So, these can be close to transit, they can also be in walkable smart growth districts by right, and there are a couple of different formula aspects that are applied to each community. Next slide. What happens if a town votes against a compliant district? It is still the state law, so municipalities that don't comply with the MBTA communities law can face the following consequences. Within the legislation itself, it lists out four different grant programs that can be affected. The one that really affects us the most would be MassWorks Infrastructure Grants. We have an active grant for a streetlight in connection with the Walnut Knoll project in the amount of about 4 million, I believe. So, these are big dollar grants, they can really help further various projects throughout the town, and these are potentially on the chopping block, hopefully just for future grants, but there is also potential for clawback, given what we're seeing in Milton. We also face civil enforcement action by the AG's office, exactly what's happening to Milton right now. Our congressman has indicated that he would not consider earmarks within his district to communities that are not compliant, in order to support the state law. This wouldn't affect federal grants that are through specific programs, but earmark funds are kind of loose, locally driven projects that we could miss out on. And reduced consideration for 13 discretionary grant programs, along with others with an asterisk there, are listed in the EO HLC guidelines. The biggest one here that affects us is probably the community planning grant through EO HLC. We're using 85,000 of that for the master plan project, so that could, if that is clawed back, that would be a really big deal to our office specifically. What I would like to say about the clawback is that Milton had a Seaport Economic Council grant clawed back, which is not typical. I haven't seen a clawback since the TARP era, when people were using funds as quickly as they can without consideration for like, you know, the eligibility criteria and how, and how projects are supposed to be structured. So, it's not typical to see a clawback. Milton had one clawed back, so it's something that's been on my radar. They also had a community compact grant approved, but under the condition that the towns come into compliance. So, really, there isn't a hard edge around what could be on the chopping block for these, these penalties to communities that failed to comply. And there are things to keep in mind when it comes to the cost of, you know, either compliance or choosing not to comply. So, next slide. Community engagement that we did since my arrival, we've had five in-person workshops, and we've listened to a lot of resident concerns, we've answered a lot of questions, we ran modeling exercises to try to talk through what something could potentially look like. We tried to be as conservative as possible in our assumptions, and we discussed the least objectionable options. We also did an internet survey, and that's a very imperfect tool, but what it does is gives the opportunity for people who don't participate in person, who can't for whatever reason, an opportunity to engage in the process. The results really echoed what we saw in the meetings, with the caveat that there were more people who were interested in option one through the survey than there were in person. But, you know, they were still, those two options rose to the top in both forums. We have submitted both of these scenarios to EO HLC as the administrating state agency to review, just to make sure that we're not missing any minor mistakes that could cause us to vote something in and still not be in compliance. So, they've received those documents, and hopefully they'll get back to us shortly. Finally, I'm hoping, knock on wood, health, health pending, that I can record an interview alongside our town council for residents that have not yet participated, just so that it's available to them and they have the information that they need before town meeting. Next slide. So, why are there two warrants here? Personally, I believe that options are good, and from the start of this process, I thought it would be a good idea to afford residents two final options at a town meeting. A big reason for this is that night meetings are hit or miss for a lot of different constituents within our community. They're challenging to parents with young children, people with non-traditional jobs, folks with disabilities and their caretakers. And I wanted to make sure that even at town meeting itself, people who may or may not have participated in the process, could still have a final, I guess, constructive say in which direction the town goes. I'm pretty sensitive to this, because even though we got really great deep interactions at the night meetings, a lot of repeat folks came to those. So, I really do want to make sure that rather than having this deep and intellectual conversation with people who really understand the issue, that also we make sure to remember that, you know, this is a democracy, and folks that can't make it should also still have, you know, participation. So, how will this work in terms of process? If Attorney Spillane's still there, he can jump in if he would like to. I'm going to try my best to reiterate the structure that I believe will take place at town meeting. The first warrant will be read, then it will be paused, and discussion will be opened on both warrants at once, because these are really intertwined projects. So, then if residents vote yes on the first warrant, they will be strongly advised to vote no on the second. Conversely, if we hear a lot of no votes on the first warrant, they'll be advised that the second warrant is the final opportunity to become compliant with the law, and they will at all times retain the right to vote no on both options. So, this process is different, but so is the state law, so we're doing our best to try to make sure that people have a good understanding of what's ahead and an opportunity to weigh in. Next slide. I'm going to dig in a little bit to models and estimates in this, and I just wanted to do a generic word on, you know, some of the strengths and weaknesses of this stuff. All of it is crystal ball stuff. Any kind of impact analysis that you do is based on best estimates of what you're seeing going on in similar communities at the present moment. So, if the prices of steel drops, then we can expect something different. If labor drops, we can expect something different. If there are unforeseen environmental complications, it's different. You know, we don't know all that stuff. So, this is, this is the best that we can assume, knowing what we know now. We measured acres and square footage through GIS, we accounted for features that impede development, and I'll talk about some of those as we go through. Redevelopment of existing uses was considered either likely or unlikely due to site configuration, existing use and economics, and we result on, we err on the side of development beyond what we actually believe is feasible, given market conditions. School impacts were measured by student, and we used the lodge and the Sylvan as the basis for that per student or per unit student estimate. It's probably high, to be honest with you, because the lodge and the Sylvan are quieter areas, and parents with schoolchildren that rent, myself included, would probably not want to do so next to a venue that has late-night concerts and games right before school day. So, our guess is there will be fewer kids here, particularly if it's a non-affordable area. And then finally, certain items may or may not be triggered over certain thresholds. So, we talked to the department heads, asked them about what can be absorbed under current staffing, you know, at what unit count they might need additional officers or paramedics, firefighters. And those results are recorded, and I'll explain some of them in the impact analysis as we go. But these are based on thresholds, and I would, I would just give a word of caution that some of the features can be estimated and some cannot really well. And capital expenses are things that really cannot be estimated to great precision here. So, they're noted, but not woven in. So, next slide. This is the option one. We're calling it the economic development case. It would incorporate the ability for development to include retail on the first floor. That would be encouraged, and it would prevent, it would provide a much higher return, which you'll see later, in terms of financial impact to the town. It strengthens the consumer base for existing businesses, allowing for new businesses in certain areas. If you walk down Patriot Place now, you see that there are some weaknesses, particularly in the central buildings, and additional residents that are kind of a captive audience would help to enhance the viability of those businesses. We get additional tax revenues, building permit fees, it enhances the experience for visitors and shoppers, but it allows for some immediate development, because surface lots are not much of an impediment to development. You also lose some tools for the control of the future. You also lose some tools for the control of the future, um, because by right means by right. Um, there's not a lot that we can do to, to require cer- certain, um, uh, standards and development. And finally, it concentrates growth in one school district, which is already kind of maxed out at capacity. So that's a, that's a big con. Next slide. Uh, the build-out analysis, we could fit potentially, and again, we were erring on the side of caution. Eleven new buildings averaging 1.5 acres each through the surface lot areas. Um, and the acres that we arrived at for the, the building size is the size of the, the Eastern Medical Building, which if you look just north of the stadium, it's the building to the left that's kind of wedge shaped. Um, so that's kind of the, the median sized building that you see on site. excuse me. So then we, we also estimate that two of the buildings within the existing footprint of Patriot Place at a slightly smaller, uh, acreage would be redeveloped. So either that, that could be like two of the, the central buil-, uh, buildings in the, the spine of Patriot Place itself. It could be potentially two buildings over top of where the theater building is right now. Um, we also estimate 25% of building square footage being retail on the first floor. That could come in the form of 100% building square footage of retail, uh, on certain buildings and 0% on others. Uh, it could be like a 10% with parking behind in some areas and then higher in others where it's more pedestrian or where parking can be accommodated elsewhere. And each building would be limited to 19 units per acre, just due to the, the acres, um, of the building and the maximum unit capacity within the formula. Um, also hotel and medical office parking would remain undeveloped because there are contracts in place with the entities that, that currently lease that, that space. Next. And this is the rough impact analysis. Um, I worked this with all the department heads, including the assessor for the new property taxes. Uh, I got the formula from our building commissioner to, to, to find the building permit fees. Now, those are one-time expenses. They are not included in the net, uh, that you see to the right. Um, the schools are, have an asterisk because the number of students could potentially trigger a need for redistricting or capacity expansion. Um, redistricting doesn't cost as much, but it's a messy process, um, and takes a long time. Then, uh, you know, capacity would be some kind of capital expense, which would be very expensive. Um, police, 200,000. You'll see that in, in, I think the, the other scenarios, either the same or similar, um, because they can absorb a lot under, um, existing strength, but at a certain level, like I said, that threshold kicks in and they need, um, in this case, two additional officers. And then in fire, 320,000, um, for, you know, annual expenses, those are the officers and training, um, for the fire department as well as paramedics. And that would bring them up to a 10-person shift for, for each shift. Um, so the net surplus there is, is pretty substantial. It could be used to service any capital expenses that would occur from this project. Um, but again, uh, this is a very conservative build estimate. Um, when you're talking about podium style parking, which they'd probably do to try to preserve some parking underneath these buildings, that's very expensive. It needs to be steel built. You're probably looking at like a floor of, of $20 million if you want to do, um, steel built construction on the first floor to, to accommodate parking. Um, so it, unless they're giving up some of these surface lots, I don't think that every single one of these buildings is going to be built, which would take down the, um, net surplus by a good amount. And, um, again, because it's by right, you don't really know what you can get. Um, and because of that, certain, certain assessment features depend on how a building is built. So, um, you know, there's still, like I say, a lot of crystal ball action with, with these things. Next one. So the second option is the sub-district model. This is one that's designed to be lower impact on the town. Um, it also makes use of the quote, "smart growth," uh, smart, uh, smart growth districts, sub-districts that are allowed in this, this legislation, as long as each sub-district is at least five acres, which both of these are. Um, so each sub-district has different development contexts. We, we kept the portions of Patriot Place that are least likely to be redeveloped. Those include the existing built area, as well as some surface lots, uh, the ones that we, we believe are, you know, relatively protected by leases. Um, and then the other two sub-districts layer over the Sylvan and the Lodge. So some of the pros is that this spreads growth across all the school districts. It limits the development opportunity within the radius to the redevelopment of Patriot Place alone. So it, it would feel pretty much the same as what it does now, even if some of those buildings over time are, are demolished and built up with multifamily above. Um, and the sub-districts are already multifamily areas, so contextually it makes sense. Cons, there are more butters of various types. There are different development contexts in each one of these locations. And finally, it requires frontage, which can open undeveloped acreage if the topography allows. Um, to be perfectly honest with you, um, at the, where the, the lodge has that forested area on the southern edge of, of the red, um, geometry there, there's a very sharp drop in, uh, in topography. They'd either have to spend a lot of money to lift that up, or they would have to incorporate that, that drop into anything that's designed. Either way, they're going to have to spend a lot of money to do so, to connect it to the rest of what's there. I don't foresee it being developed, but you know, being conservative here, we estimated one building at the lodge and then at the Sylvan, three. Though you see a similar topography situation on the right in the forested area, um, there's a sharp drop in, in the height of the, the site, um, where, where you see the, uh, the forested area to the right of the, the Sylvan. So that one, we, we estimated three potential buildings. So if you go to the next slide. This build-out scenario just includes two redeveloped buildings within the footprint of Patriot Place. So like I said, that could be two of the, these little buildings that are in the middle, um, that don't get as much foot traffic as the rest, if, if it ever becomes financially feasible to do so. And again, I, I estimated 25% building square footage, um, just in case they wanted to do that podium style parking underneath the rest of it. And four new multifamily only buildings located in the sub-districts. So those carry a lower, uh, tax rate, which you'll see in the impact analysis next. But again, I don't think that a lot of it's feasible. Um, and again, the, the density requirement is a little higher here, just because, um, we carved out a smaller amount of acreage. So to meet the unit capacity requirement of our formula, uh, we will have to allow a, a higher, um, acreage than what's currently allowed in these areas. Next slide. The impact analysis, um, I, I, I won't explain too much more. I'll just show that the fire line item remains constant here and the reason is because the chief expressed concern that already they, they have a report that shows that they need, um, they need personnel immediately to get up to that 10, uh, firefighters and paramedics per shift. So this indicates that, you know, all of these scenarios require that because they can absorb a lot more, um, capacity, um, once they're at that staffing level. But he, he perceives no step up once they're there. That, this is just for, for peace of mind and to, to ensure that, uh, residents are protected a- at any capacity. Um, again, the building permit fees are a one-time cost and the schools are done by, at a per, per student cost, which is probably more realistic here if it gets built. Again, if, big if, uh, just because the estimates and, and student numbers are, um, based on the, um, existing conditions, uh, uh, at the lodge and, and the Sylvan. So there's a net cost to this, but to be perfectly honest, I, I don't think that there would, would be in reality, just because we're very, very conservative on what gets built. Next.
Just one question, is that a, is that a net annual cost of 206,000?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So there's just a summary table. Um, I, I, I won't go through it except to say, you know, the, the big expenses that we can't really plan for don't really apply to the sub-district model. You're not going to get the level of density that would require any of those capital expenses. Um, but, uh, they do apply to the economic development model. So are the, are the annual revenues that we're just, you know, that we're modeling out sufficient to pay for those things? I don't know. Again, it's, it's going to be something that residents will have to determine, along with many, many other factors in this legislation. So we can stop for there because this is the end of my presentation on MBTA communities piece. The next one's accessory dwelling units. So I'll take any questions that I'm sure that you're going to have on this.
So when you modeled this, um, and you, you know, you talk about the number of units, et cetera, is that based on one family, I mean, one, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom? How, how did you? How, how, how are you envisioning that?
So we, we went based off of the density that we're prescribing in the regulation. It doesn't matter to us, um, exactly how, how many units and how many square foot, feet at this point, um, each unit's going to be. We're, we're working backwards based off of that maximum unit capacity of 1,152 units per acre. Um, we can reduce that by, like I said, um, layering it over areas that are already built that are very unlikely to get, uh, rebuilt, or it will be more incremental. Um, so what you're seeing is kind of that delta, that, that, um, difference between what's already there and what could potentially be built on the, um, the low hanging fruit within these districts.
Okay, thanks.
Catherine, um, and I understand that this is all just, uh, at this point, just kind of, uh, best estimates and targets. Uh, and I appreciate the time you've put into these analysis, but just a general, general, general question. Given that your projections on units are just a fraction of what our original expectations were from the state for our target, um, why, I, I guess maybe you could explain or, or, because I don't recall this happened at, at least at the workshop session that I attended, um, why you would believe that these would be acceptable, uh, in terms of compliance?
Uh, that's a great question. The first call that I had with the individual who oversees this program at EO HLC, which is the state agency that oversees it, um, she kind of referenced the fact that other communities were, were, um, doing this approach of layering over existing built up areas and that it is compliant. She kind of did it with like, uh, one of those, yeah, well, you know, you, you, it shouldn't be done this way, but other communities are doing it this way. They are compliant and, you know, there's nothing we can do. So it was actually, you know, it came up in that conversation and, um, I was assured that, you know, even though this is not shovel-ready ground, it still is compliant under the, the, the formula set forth by EO HLC.
Geez, kind of undermines the credibility of the whole initiative, really.
It, it does in a way, um, but a lot of peer communities have already passed similar, um, districts where it's a lot more challenging to build than it would be if it were a, a blank slate.
So in other words, a, a similar type of approach as, as this or these?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. So was it your impression that they're willing to be flexible in order to bring communities into compliance as opposed to holding a firm line and saying, this is what we said, this is what we mean?
Yeah, that, that was definitely the, the, um, information that I got while, when discussing with them, that they want to help communities to get into compliance. Um, like I said, I did send both scenarios to their office for review, just to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. My hope is that anything that comes back would be minor.
Okay. Yeah, we just have to be more flexible, there's so much pushback. They're finding, yeah. Oh. We need down. We need down from us at this point, or you just want to go through all of them and then...
It's, it's up, it's up to you. If you want to, uh, close the public hearings or if you want to continue, I mean, sorry, open the other public hearings and then, um, discuss them all at once. It's...
Just for Catherine's, you know, situation, why don't we let her give her other presentations?
Sure, that's fine with me.
So we have to open the other meetings?
Yeah.
So being sometime past, um, 7:20 PM, we have public hearing warrant article, Foxborough zoning bylaw to amend section 8.0 by deleting section 8.1 accessory apartments in its entirety and inserting a new section, 8.1 accessory dwelling units, and amend various sections to conform with the new section 8.1. And, um, in addition, we have a public hearing warrant article, Foxborough zoning bylaw to amend the zoning map by rezoning the parcels of property that are situated at 69 Central Street and identified as assessors map 092, Lot 138, and 75 Central Street and identified as assessors map 092, Lot 137, from the R15 Residential District to the General Business District, and to amend the Foxborough Center Overlay District planned by extending the area delineated on such plan so as to include such parcels.
Okay. Uh, could you bring up the next slide, the next slide, Gabby?
Uh, what's new?
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, so I, I'm just going to give you guys some summary bullets, just for the sake of time and convenience, of what's in our, our, um, you know, existing requirement and what's new, um, that this, this law, um, requires of us. And, uh, just at a very high level, this is in the wake of the Affordable Homes Act, which was signed back in August. We have until February to comply, so that's why it's being submitted, uh, now. So the existing requirement requires a special permit from the planning board for any accessory dwelling unit to be added to a principal dwelling. The new requirement is that it, uh, forces us to allow an accessory, a, a single accessory dwelling unit by right. Any additional units would require a special permit from the planning board. Um, right now, we restrict the size to 850 square feet net floor area. Um, the, the new regulations limit the size to the smaller one half of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet gross floor area. Finally, it requires the, the owner of the property to reside either in the principal dwelling or in the accessory dwelling unit, the way that our, our, our law is currently written. The new requirement is that it would prohibit any requirement that the principal dwelling or its accessory dwelling unit be occupied by the owner of the applicable property. So those are the first three changes. Next up, it require, right now, we require a family member of the property owner to reside in either the principal or the accessory dwelling unit. The new requirement does not require a family member or property owner to reside in the The second one here is, uh, currently we require, um, adequate parking for two additional motor vehicles, whereas the new legislation limits off-street parking to one per motor vehicle. And if the principal dwelling's located within a half mile of a commuter rail station, um, we cannot, uh, require any additional parking spaces for the ADU. Finally, the, um, it requires accessory dwelling units to be attached to a part of the principal dwelling, as it's currently written. And the new requirement is, uh, a prohibition of that. It would allow for freestanding ADUs as a result of the state law. Next slide. What happens if the town votes no here? Um, it is state law, it was signed by state legislature, the governor, um, communities are bound by it. So if the town votes no, um, our existing bylaw would no longer apply. Uh, as the building commissioner i- is reviewing these, um, cases piece by piece and somebody submits for an ADU, um, and it meets the state guidelines, um, he would not, he would be, he would not have the ability to enforce our existing bylaws. He would have to, um, defer to the state legislation. So in submitting the, the proposed language that we have for the fall town meeting, this just affords us a little bit more review over certain, certain, um, uh, stylistic and, and substantive, um, pieces of, of how ADUs could look in our town.
Kevin?
Yes.
Want to go now or what?
Yeah, sure. Barney, feel free to just...
Barney, I think, I think they're working. The light's on.
So for the, is it working?
Yes.
Okay, good. So for the record, Barnett Overatt, 10 Ames Road, Chairman of the Board of Appeals. I drafted this bylaw and my initial intent in drafting it was to give us a bylaw that complies with the amendments to the State Zoning Act that were enacted this past summer. Over the course of the last several days, I think the more important reason to do it is to have something in writing in the town that governs this issue to the extent that we possibly can, so that a homeowner knows exactly what he or she needs to do, so the building commissioner really has a guideline in, um, in that respect. Um, Catherine indicated the principal changes between current bylaw and the proposed bylaw. And again, what I've drafted, as far as the proposed bylaw, complies to my mind, I'd like to say 100%, but as I'll explain in a few minutes, there is an error in there. I, I certainly would not have drafted this if we were not compelled to do so, or if I didn't feel we were compelled to do so. I mean, to a certain degree, what I'm doing here is to borrow a phrase from Yogi Berra, deja vu all over again. vu all over again, because you remember, three years ago, we proposed some really small modifications to the accessory bylaw, and they, they went down fairly, you know, significantly at, at Town Hall. But I do think that this is good public policy, and I do think it's a good idea for the town to comply as much as possible in writing with what the state law requires, and to, again, give the average homeowner and the building commissioner the knowledge of what we feel is appropriate and what the law does, does allow. Essentially, what the statute says is that a city or town cannot have a zoning bylaw or ordinance that prohibits, unreasonably restricts, or requires a special permit or other discretionary zoning action that would govern or apply to a single accessory dwelling unit that is to be added to a principal dwelling in a single-family residential district. Phrased differently, a single accessory unit is going to be allowed by right. And because our current bylaw requires a special permit for accessory units, it'll be negated as of February 2nd, when the state law takes, takes effect. And as Catherine indicated, that would mean that if we did not pass this at Town Hall, at Town Meeting, that the building commissioner would be required to comply with what the statute says, and not have certain of the advantages that are built into, what I believe are built into, to what I prepared. You know, for example, site plan review by the planning board, and other provisions that, that are in the, in the draft. So again, I do think it's necessary and appropriate for us to, at Town Meeting, pass the, pass the proposal. Select Board has voted in favor of it. I met with them the other night, and they voted unanimously to, to support this at Town Meeting. Now, I mentioned there's an error here, and I'm going to apologize to the Select Board for my, for my error. It's not the first time that I've been mistaken about something, and it won't be the last, I'm sure. The statute has a provision that states that not more than one additional parking area shall be required for an accessory dwelling unit, and no additional parking space shall be required for an accessory dwelling unit, an accessory dwelling that's located not more than 0.5 miles from a commuter rail station. What I drafted, and if you look on the second...
I'm sorry, the, the board, I, I made a mistake, and you're missing, I think, one of the pages in the handout that I gave you, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Well, let me, let me read it then. What I drafted was adequate off-street parking shall be provided on the lot on which an accessory dwelling is, is, unit, unit is located for one motor vehicle, either within a garage or carport, or on a paved or all-weather gravel surface, provided that no additional parking space is provided for an accessory dwelling unit that is located not more than 0.5 miles from a commuter rail station. I responded to questions from the town manager and questions from the Select Board the other night, saying that if somebody wanted to, say, have three parking spaces on their property, that would not be permitted, and that, I believe, is wrong. The law says that we can't require, but it doesn't place a limitation on the number of spaces. So I think that one paragraph does need to be, to be modified, needs to be amended. And unfortunately, my understanding is that the warrant has been signed, so we would have to do this at, at Town Meeting.
On the floor. So just a question, Barney, because they don't, the state doesn't bring this up, but I'm just curious. So you, you don't have to attach it to the existing building, they clearly state that. It can be a separate individual thing, as long as it meets the sizing requirement, et cetera.
The, the state statute says absolutely nothing about whether units have to, have to be detached or attached. It just talks about adding a dwelling unit to a principal dwelling. But what I've seen in my own thoughts on it, because we can't unreasonably restrict, I think if we were to say that detached dwellings were not permitted, or to say conversely, that you have to attach the unit to the principal dwelling, that might view it as being an unreasonable restriction.
Right, so the reason I'm asking the question is, how does that affect utility? In other words, if I decide I want to build it 15 feet off or 20 feet off my existing structure, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm asking this because my son, in California, the law in Los Angeles used to be, you had to have a separate service for electric, for gas, and for, and for water. When they changed it, they allowed it to tie into the existing service, so, those services. So I, I don't know, how do we, and maybe it's not our issue, it's, I'm just pointing it out that, you know, it's people, it's going to come up at some point, you know, and I don't know that we need to address it here, but I'm just asking, you know, whether, how, how, how either the, the municipality or the state will deal with that.
And I don't know the answer to that, but one, one thing I can say is because the state statute prohibits any requirement for owner occupancy, there could be situations where you can have completely unrelated individuals in the two units, and it would make sense then to have separate utilities, separate electricity, et cetera.
That wouldn't necessarily be a concern.
No, it wouldn't be, I'm just raising it, you know, because it's...
Other than maybe water.
It's going to come up, certainly it's going to come up maybe at Scott Shippey's office, Building Inspector's office, or with the, or with the town in general, you know...
Well, I don't think you're going to have separate septic.
You probably wouldn't be able to park them. But I mean, we're not allowed to have more, more than one primary residence on a lot at this point in the town anyway, so I think that this is kind of contrary to that.
Yeah, but it's the state regulations, so they can tell us what to do anyway.
Yeah.
Anyway, just, just, just food for thought, I mean, not, not for this meeting, not for passing this at Town Meeting, but just something that could complicate things with the people who want to do it. You know, Barney, your, your points on giving, giving some framework to the building commissioner are well-taken, sort of like right out of the gate, you know. But I can't help but think there, I mean, we're just touching the tip of the iceberg of potential unresolved issues, you know, is there a case to be made for saying, "Hey, time out here, you know, we need to..." Both at the state level, as well as at the local level, some of these issues really need to be addressed before we, you know, sort of say, "Okay, guys, let's go." You know, you can start those applications coming in.
Exactly.
Again, excuse me, February 2nd, the state requirements take effect, so we have nothing in place. Mr. Shippey then is without, without something, you know...
Guidance and removal controls.
Now, he and I have talked about it, and, and what we've, you know, pretty much agreed is that if, in fact, the proposal is not approved, or it's withdrawn, that we would have to establish some kind of guidelines for him to, to utilize in that, in that circumstance. But, and I don't want to speak for him, I, I think he would prefer to have something in writing.
I'm sure he would.
Yes, I'm sure he would too.
Yeah. To my knowledge, nobody has challenged this so far. I've not heard or seen anything.
I, I find it highly unlikely that they would. I mean, compared to the other thing, this is pretty, pretty easy.
Except it's, it isn't, it isn't. I mean, there's a lot here.
Yeah.
And the other, I will say the other thing about this, and this gets back to whatever might happen at Town Meeting, is, you know, this, this affects everything. You know, it doesn't necessarily, it's not confined to the lodge, it's not confined to Route 1, you know, this affects, you know...
Your neighbor, you might not like it, but your neighbor can do this now.
Yeah, you could do it, whatever.
And if you remember some of the arguments four years ago against it?
I do.
They'll, they'll come up again.
Yeah. Well, even more so.
Even more so.
For sure. And if the first series of articles is controversial, it may just bleed over.
Yeah, first we'll get it riled up, and then we'll deal with this one.
Well, I, you know, I, not only do I, I want to say thank you for putting some guidance in there for, for the building inspector, but, I mean, I think we have to present something at the Town Meeting.
Yeah.
You know?
Agreed.
Agreed. Thanks for clarifying.
So as, as far as my error, what I would suggest is come up, I'll come up with new language. Hopefully I can have something before your next meeting. I've also talked to Frank about it, and I'll work with him as to how he wants to handle that, as far as an amendment at Town Meeting.
What's the date of the Town Meeting, Gab?
November 18th.
I'm sorry?
November 18th.
November 18th, okay.
Our, our next meeting is on the 14th.
Okay.
Someone else have other questions?
Not from me.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's your pleasure, madam?
Oh, we still have one more to discuss.
Okay.
And it is the, the rezoning of...
Central Street?
The Central Street, yeah.
Yeah, so... Is, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to step out for one second.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, can we get the PowerPoint again?
Can you hear me again?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. And is the PowerPoint up?
Yep.
Yes.
Great. So this is probably the easiest of the warrant articles that we're bringing before you. The existing context here, we're hoping to get a vote to rezone 69 and 75 Central Street. Right now, both buildings are R15 general residential district. What we'd like to see is general business district with an extension of the Foxborough Center overlay district. So these pictures kind of show the existing context. So you, you can see that one is like a three, a three-family home, the other one is our senior center. Next slide. The existing zoning and context. I highlighted the two affected parcels in bright yellow on this map, so you can see that they are just south of the general business district and just south of the overlay district. The context is very walkable, they're right across the street from How Sushi. It's part of the traditional town center, it feels like the traditional town center. So the zoning change would be in character with the surrounding land uses and what Foxborough wants to see in the uptown area. Next slide. What would change?
Catherine, can you hold on one second? Can you go back to that slide for a second? So the two yellow ones are the, are the parcels in question, correct?
Correct.
And then, in front of the smaller yellow parcel, there's a little tiny square there, a rectangle. What is that?
Uh, I think that's a, a bank or something. How Sushi is the one that's just outside the district, it's, it's kind of a beige, one of the beige squares, it's in the R15 district, so I think it's a bank that's next to it, but I'm, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, thanks.
That'd be TD Bank.
Okay, so what would change here? The existing zoning allows for religious structures, educational uses, childcare centers, one or two family dwellings, and associated uses by right. They'd require a special permit to do adult daycare, or special-purpose medical housing, multifamily dwellings, private clubs, et cetera, and it prohibits retailer-service buildings. So it's kind of a, a, a strict zoning category for being so, so close to the center and having businesses and, you know, sidewalk and all the, the stuff that would ordinarily promote more commerce and walkability. Under the new zoning, it would allow up to three dwellings in a mixed-use project by right, so the existing three-family home could stay and be redeveloped to, to also provide commercial if desired. If it were demolished, it would allow them opportunities to build a mixed-use project or just do retail if that's what they would like. And it also would allow for retailer, restaurant establishments, theaters, museums, et cetera, all by right, while relaxing parking requirements and dimensional regulations. So this really opens up what can be built on these two pads, which is more in line with what, what's already in uptown. So next slide. Why would we want this to change? In the immediate, the town's almost ready to dispose of the current senior center building, so this would increase the development opportunity and the potential revenue from the sale. Longer term, it extends the boundaries of general business and F-Cod in a logical manner, where existing context supports it. It avoids spot zoning one non-adjacent parcel, and it allows for more options for the eventual redevelopment of 69 Central Street, whenever, whenever or if ever that occurs. And finally, it just encourages a walkable, vibrant uptown area. That's it.
Okay. I mean, I think it's a necessary evil that we, we need to deal with, and adding the extra parcel there makes it better, more palatable, and fairer by doing that. And I agree with you, it's, it, it gets rid of the spot zoning curse, and, you know, there's things right across the street that are already commercial, and right, and, and right next to it too practically, with the, with the CVS and everything, so... Gives the town an opportunity to, you know, get back some of the funds theoretically from the purchase of the, the church down on Main Street, so...
It definitely makes it more attractive to develop.
Yeah.
No issues?
No, I have no issues with it at all. Jeff? No. What'd you like to do?
I, I think we need to close the public hearings, and then, and talk about voting.
All right, then I'll, can I entertain a blanket? You know, we're to have to do them one by one.
Um, should probably do them one by one.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Warren Article, Section 9.0, to a new section 9.8.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Warren Article, Foxborough, to amend section 9.0 by inserting a new section 9.8 establishing the Foxborough multifamily overlay district.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Foxborough zoning bylaw to amend section 8.0 by deleting section 8.1 accessory apartments in its entirety, inserting a new section 8.1, accessory dwelling units.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Finally, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing, Foxborough zoning bylaw to amend the zoning map by rezoning the parcels of property that are situated at 69 Central and identified as assessors map 092, Lot 138, and at 75 Central Street, identified as assessors map 092, Lot 137, from the R15 residential district to the general business, the general business district.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Anything else?
Yes.
Yes? Feel free, do tell.
We need, yeah, I, I brought out the, the maps of the two districts in question, just so that you can have them, you know, fresh in your eyes. We need, we need the vote to...
Be submitted?
The, the board to make a vote, whether or not you're making a, you know, positive recommendation to Town Meeting on these articles, and a reason for the vote.
Jeff, maybe just to expedite this particular issue, I mean, is there anyone here at the table who thinks for any sort of consideration that option one has some advantages that, that would be preferable? Because certainly, I think the feedback, and just on appearances' sake, you know, most of the, most of the support, such as it has been, has gone to option three. And, you know, on the face of it, you probably would think that. And I would just, just to get things narrowed down, is there anyone here that thinks that for any reason that option one might be preferable or more advantageous to the citizens of the town? Only financially.
Option one would be the, the economic development...
Up at the stadium?
Standard, yeah, at the stadium, or, you know, at the, in the, in the warrant, we meant, we call it the Patriot Place version.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. But it's a lot closer to the residential neighborhoods.
Well, it's not closer to residential neighborhood than this one is, really, but it's, you know...
It allows some more expansion. It's hard to believe the difference between the two is only four acres.
Yeah, you're right.
It looks about 40% larger, 30% larger.
Well, don't forget, that's the aggregate acres in option three.
Right, right.
Right.
If I may, like, it might be a good idea to make a recommendation, like, just make a motion for a recommendation of the first warrant articles, and then you can vote accordingly. So if people don't want to recommend it, they can say no, and then do the same to recommend the second warrant article, and then if people don't believe that they want to recommend that one, they can say no. That way, you know, it's recorded for both of the articles.
So Jeff, when you said that, so that was your experience at going to the meetings, that there was a more positive thing for option three than option one?
Well, I only went to one, but even in Catherine's introduction, she indicated as much, so...
Yes.
Not that that necessarily should be pivotal in terms of our deliberations, but...
Right. No, I'm just curious.
Yeah, there was more support in the in-person events. There was almost unanimous support for option three and a couple of hands for option one. In the survey, there was a lot more support for option one, but option three was still the preferred option among residents.
Should we be concerned about what the vote is more apt to approve?
Well, I think, honestly, the prime consideration there was the school districts.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And...
And less of a reason to do necessarily a second substation fire if it's up on Route 1, possibly. Because the personnel part isn't going to change based on what she told us.
That's right.
But they're really, you know, at this point, there is no real solution to that, you know, school issue for a single district.
I agree. Other than someone saying, oh, we'll have to build a new school.
Right. Well, I mean, there would be redistricting oft, but, you know...
At least here, there's multiple districts that the kids would be able to go to.
Well, to follow up on Catherine's suggestion, I'll put on the table a motion to make a recommendation in favor of option one. Just to get it there.
Just to get a vote out. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Right.
Well, well, well.
For Catherine's sake, the vote was 2-2.
Yep.
That's okay.
Now, you want to make a recommendation for option three?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. That was on option one, the Patriot Place version.
Yes, the Patriot Place version.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Can we revote that?
We can.
All right. My mistake, I'm sorry.
You're the chairman.
Motion's on the table to seek a recommendation at Town Meeting for option one. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay.
Sorry about that. It's okay.
Further, I'll float a motion to recommend option three. Is there a second?
Can you do option two or say, like, the sub-district version?
Sub-district version, yes.
Yeah. Let me put my glasses on. Option two, which would be...
Sub-district version. Yeah, you voted out of order.
Out of order?
Order, yes.
Okay. Sub-district, yeah, the option, you know, to amend section 9.0, inserting a new section 9.8, establishing the Foxborough overlay district, sub-district version, and amend various sections to conform with the section 9.8. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And can you give me a reason, you know, why you're voting to recommend this article at Town Meeting? We have to do a report at Town Meeting.
I think the reasons are those that we stated, which is, number one, in the voting, either online or in person at the meetings that were held, there seemed to be a more positive feeling towards that option. And furthermore, even though there may be less income to the town, there's much less of an opportunity there for redistricting and/or issues with students having to, you know, attend school in a way that's more complicated by doing the Route 1 option, the other option, option one.
Thank you.
And the cost is more or less negligible comparatively speaking.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, can we vote on the accessory dwelling units article?
With Barney's correction? What are they doing on Town Meeting floor?
I think that you need to do as in the warrant and then...
And then Barney will make a correction on Town Meeting floor. Is there a motion by someone here? Hearing none.
Sounds like Frank.
I'm telling you. I'll make a motion for us to recommend a public hearing warrant article, rather, not a public hearing, the warrant article, Foxborough zoning bylaw, section 8.0, deleting section 8.1 accessory apartments in its entirety and inserting a new section 8.1 accessory dwelling units, and amend various sections to conform with new section 8.1. Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And...
Honestly, I have as many reservations about this as I do.
And the reason would be...
The rezoning?
To bring into compliance. No, the reason you voted positively for the ADU.
Yeah, to bring us into compliance with the state, the passage of the new state bylaw.
Agreed. I would not want to go beyond that.
No.
There's going to be a lot of questions come up with this.
Yeah.
And finally, to make a recommendation to amend the zoning map by rezoning parcels of property of 69 Central and identified as assessors map 092, Lot 138, and 75 Central Street, identified as assessors map 092, Lot 137, from the R15 residential district to the general business district, and amend Foxborough Center overlay district planned by extending the area delineate on such plans so as to include such parcels.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And your reason behind that, sir?
Reason behind that is it's good for... What's good for General Motors is good for the USA.
Right.
Because it's a benefit to the town in order for us to be able to sell off the old senior center, and also to not create a zoning conundrum by not including the parcel next door, so it's not spot zoning. Improve the F-Cod.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion or adjourn?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.